Thank you, Mr. McGroy. So with that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for today, Monday, March 14th. Thank you all for your patience. We did have some technical difficulties joining. And as we look at the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda, if we could just add attendance, so that way we can vote to do an excused absence for our colleague, I'd appreciate that friendly amendment. Are there any others that we need to add to tonight's agenda? I don't see any from the team. I do just want to call out, under approval of the minutes, we should also add the approval of the February 14th work session minutes. Hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to review those as well. So that would again be under approval of minutes. And so with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. So at this time, we'll move forward with the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the January 10th work session minutes?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second? By Councilmember McBride. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And as I mentioned, we did receive the February 14th work session minutes. And the reason those stick out is because we were all together on Valentine's Day for that meeting. We cannot forget those minutes. They are extra special. There's a lot of love in those minutes. So with that, may I please have a motion to approve the February 14th work session minutes?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And under the next item, as I mentioned, for attendance, I'd like to call for a motion to give Councilmember Blatt an excused absence for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you all so much. So we don't have any special appearances or presentations tonight, but quite a bit under old and new business. And so with the first item being the State of Maryland Bond Bill Recommendation for the Bladensburg Municipal Center, I'll turn it over to our town administrator, Mr. McGroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still trying to get, I'm working off my phone because I'm still trying to get my computer attached to the network here. But this item in your packets is a follow-up to the prior discussions of our request to ask the town, ask the state for funding for the Bladensburg Municipal Center. That is a reconstruction of the existing town hall and police station. That information has been submitted and that bond process has been revised since the last time I was involved with it. And it's a pretty neat process. When you hit the submit button on this fact sheet, it actually populates real-time onto the web and it appears as part of the massive legislation being considered by the state house and the state senate. So our information has been submitted and the purpose of this agenda item is simply to have a discussion among the council if you wish, but this is a follow-on from a task at last meeting that the council voted to move forward with this. I had sent the council an explanation of the fact that it's been a bit of a moving target since then with input from the town engineer and some architects that they engaged who have a good amount of experience constructing municipal facilities. So the costs have increased. And we anticipate, you know, those numbers are going to change throughout this intense process of working with the staff, the council, the engineers, and future architects. But for now, we feel that this submission to the state is a solid piece of work and the next stage will be presumably working with our senator and delegate or delegates to move this forward legislatively and make sure it stays in the state budget and ultimately is approved. So if there are questions, I'm happy to
Thank you.
take them on. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
No, no worries. I know there's a bit of a delay, but thank you for that overview and do understand the information you shared with respect to the price. I think just in terms of the process, one of the questions I have, Mr. McGroy, is in order to better understand the type of facility that we need, since it's here for our community, I would be looking for some guidance from staff in terms of putting together, if it's not a listening session, where we can get input from residents on the things that they would like to see as part of that new municipal center, at least a survey going out to the community to gather input, so we can be thoughtful about what the community needs are as we're building this. I know the library is going up right down the street. But again, if we could get some input from residents, I know it worked well in previous info gathering opportunities, just to have the voice of our residents heard in terms of what their needs are and ideas. Sometimes they think of things, of course, that we don't think of. So I would be looking for you for some guidance on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'll, you know, if, if you wish, you know, we can open this up to other staff as well, but I think that's a great suggestion. I could make the case that our immediate goal should be 100% focused on the state legislature and trying to smooth this process through the legislature, while at the same time going forward with the staff and council review of what we have in place so far. Ultimately, you know, until, until we are further along with the design process, I think a public input on this, you know, I think we would want to have architects and engineers and staff and council together to participate in that public process. So at this point, I think we're, we're sort of, it might be a little premature to do too much of that visioning without having developed this proposal a bit further. But I think it's an excellent idea and one that certainly should come well before the final plans are made and drawings put out to bid, for example.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Rowell, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, Mr. McGroy, for calling me to share the information. I do agree with Mayor James's point that we need to make sure that our taxpaying stakeholders are included in the formulation of an idea of the design aspect, even prior to us getting architects out, because let's say, for instance, there we, our residents, and this is just an example, wants a fitness facility for residents to be able to participate in a municipal way. If that's a recommendation, I am confident that we would need to work with the architects to be able to design that aspect. So I am definitely in favor of the proposal that Mayor James just suggested, which is having some listening sessions so that we can be able to hear from our taxpaying stakeholders. Additionally, I would like to, as I discussed with you, I know there are similar municipalities with new municipal centers and they have either shared the financial burden of the new facility through the co-location of different services. For example, College Park co-located with the University of Maryland to share the cost. And so I also would like to see if that would, if this is something that we could work collaboratively with our staff to reach out to our county and state partners to see if there is an opportunity where, let's say, for instance, just an example, Employee Prince George's, they're looking for a co-located space or office in this area to service the port towns and surrounding communities. Maybe PG Community College is looking for a classroom space and that we could, from the beginning of this financial venture in this municipal center, be able to coordinate that and collaborate with a partner so that we could lower the cost. So these are just some ideas preliminary. I did speak with Councilmember Brown about this as we were preparing for today's work session. And so I know Councilmember Brown, I won't, I don't know if you feel comfortable, but I, I, you know, we were talking about this and we want to make sure that they were wholesome partners, you know, some, some people that were established. So maybe our county partners, our state partners, looking into ways that we could be able to, you know, make braided funds possible for the use of this municipal opportunities.
Great. Thank you for those recommendations, Councilmember Rowell. And so, Mr. McGroy, again, if we could take these recommendations back and get some feedback, once you're able to talk to the other department heads, that would be helpful so we can agree upon the direction and timing for moving forward. Councilmember Brown, I see your hand.
Yeah, just really quick, and I guess piggybacking on, on you, Mayor, and Councilmember Rowell, I think it's definitely a good idea to, to get input from the, from the community with those listening sessions. They've proved to be very effective in the, in the, in the past, and especially a little bit before the design phase, so that some of those ideas, you know, can be considered. And, and when, when Councilmember Jocelyn and I were talking, oh, this week, this past weekend, because we talked about the College Park, their, their, their town hall. And yeah, because they did partner with, you know, she told me with the University of Maryland, and I think it's, would, would be, would, would be, would be good if it's the state, if the county, Prince George's County, or the state wanted to, to partner, to partner with us and share some, and share some, some of that cost. So that's, that's all.
Great. Thank you both for those recommendations. Once again, and I just thought about the library stakeholder engagement process and how I remember going to those meetings when they were asking, what do you think the theme should be? Do you have any ideas? And they did that early on in the process, not that they could take every community idea and put it into new library, but at least they got to kind of hear the themes and figure out how best to incorporate the most appropriate ones into the new library facility. And so that's what came to mind. We know we can't do everything that every single resident wants, and we're not at all suggesting that. But it is good because we want the community to be excited about this project, to feel that they have buy-in. They, you know, they're stakeholders in this. So it would be good to get their opinion, but we don't need to keep going on that. I think the point was made. So again, Mr. McGroy, it looks like you got your computer going, but if you could just work with the council and staff so we could move forward in that direction. And again, it doesn't have to be tomorrow. We're just saying, these are the things that we would like to see, you know, as we're working through the legislative process. The next item we have on the agenda is the town code project update. And am I turning that over to Mr. McGroy or Mr. Chernovich?
Yes, Mayor, that was, that, that is in my court as well. And so I have now received substantial input from the staff on this and am in the final stages of preparing that to send back out to the council for your review. And I just wanted to sort of recap the process. We had talked about this in December with the then-new council. And it's, as I mentioned then, it's an 81-page document. And, and, you know, in that December meeting packet were, were the documents that sort of framed this project when it was conceived and started in 2019. So I just wanted to sort of put down a marker. As we approach the budget process for this year, you know, there's an opportunity for some extra work sessions that we're focused on the budget. But similarly, for this code update, there's 80 pages of questions for the town to answer. I'm, as I said, consolidating the input on responses for the town, and it's not, not very dense work product. I mean, it's a section of the code, maybe one or two questions per page. So it's pretty straightforward. Many of the questions are fairly easy, binary choices, you know, yes, no, do you resolve this conflict with this word choice? Some others are a little more complicated and will require some thought and potentially debate among the council. So I just wanted to say a fair warning that that work product is very close to being ready to be submitted to the council. And at that point, at your pace, we can schedule some additional time to work on that. And that's all I have on that at the moment.
Great. Thank you for that update, Mr. McGroy. And I think you're right. When we first started this process, it was probably four years ago. Officer Reinhardt can correct me on that, but it's been several years. And I do think it would be helpful, since some of our council members are new, since we haven't entered into this agreement, to just have some kind of workshop-type of session. Maybe it's a separate work session where we get a 101 through, you know, where we are in terms of the modifications. I know you said there's certain things we'll need to debate and just to have the space, rather than trying to pack it in 15 minutes in a work session such as this, but also to educate us there. I can't speak for everyone, but I haven't looked at that document in several years. And it was because I knew we were going through this process. And so I think just having that place where we can really talk through it, this is the time to do it, since we're going through the rewrite, could be helpful to the entire council and just leaning into some of the experience that they have that could help us as we move forward. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Just, just one more example. Just as an example today, this just came up in a conversation with me and with Purnell Hall. And I was asking about the load, what, what used to be the Load Your Own Truck program. And I don't even know if there's anybody on the call who would remember this program when it was operating. But it used to be the case that for a set fee, the town would drop off a pickup truck in front of your house on a Friday afternoon, and then you could load it up over the weekend, and then it would magically get taken to the, to the dump at the end of the day. So that, there's a vestige of that still in the code, but the town hasn't actually had that program for years. The costs have obviously gone up substantially, both in terms of tipping fees and fuel and staff time. It's not especially economically viable anymore. But that's an example of something that, rather than getting bogged down in a bunch of time, debating the merits of this program or whether we reestablish it, we could simply say, it's already in the code. And all we're trying to do now is, is inventory and make a few easy technical corrections to get the code up online. And if we want to go back and debate those policies, we can put a pin in that to do for the future. But if it is easy to say, hey, we don't do that anymore, let's take it out, then that's a choice we can make with the, with the checkbox. So, so again, hopefully we can move expeditions through that if I stop explaining these kinds of details. So I will do that now. Thank you.
Nope. And I'm just gonna hitch my wagon to that and just throw in one more. So when that code was written, I'm not even gonna say how many years ago, one of the requirements was if you had a trash can at your home, you couldn't leave it out front. But as you know, now we have townhomes in the community. Townhomes weren't here in the 1950s, 1960s, or even the 1970s. And so for some of the homeowners, I'm thinking of in Ward 2, where they're the piggybacks, it's not possible for them to wheel their trash cans to the back of their homes. So there's things like that that are just simply outdated policies. Like you said, we don't need to get into debates about, but just to be thoughtful about what the town's code is concerning those kinds of things. Because this is, again, this is our opportunity to address them and just make this more applicable to where we are currently and where we're taking the town in the future. So again, thank you for letting me tag on there. Let me see. So next up, we have Ward 1 Parking. Councilmember Rowell, I think you added this to the agenda. Was this you or Mr. McGroy? Uh-oh, you're muted.
Yes, that was me.
I'll defer to Councilmember Rowell on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. So I wanted to just make sure that we continue the conversation relating to the parking concerns. I know that we start, restarted the conversation under this administration as it relates to some of the parking concerns, as it relates to Ward 1 versus Ward 2, and just how we can move forward. There has been a great deal of, of code enforcement involvement as it relates to providing notices to individuals who are in violation of some of the code ordinances that's in existence. But I'm not too sure if that is the only resolution to our problem. I was able to ascertain a lot of questions, comments, concerns from the constituents that live in Ward 1 as a Ward 1 representative for them. And I was given a lot of information. I was given some parking notes and meetings, and I am almost done reviewing them. And there were at least five reports and there was a few emails. And at that time, it was to my understanding that they had the county involved in a lot of their, just parking suggestions and their meeting notices. Councilmember Brown and I did collaborate this weekend, and I did share those reports with her. And it is recommend, I think that we do need to look at a way that we can be able to bring back a parking committee, because this isn't, this is a big ordeal and it affects a lot of us. And I think the more research and collaboration that we have with our residents, along with our staff, to include our code enforcement department, our police officers who, you know, work in this day in and day out, we can share the love and the load of the work, so it's not all on our town staff. And so just, I know there were, it was like a standstill because there was, it's from my understanding, like, well, where are we going to fund? Or where are we going to find money to adhere to some of these things that the town needs? But I do think it's worth us being able to cast a net and see if we have any residents that are willing to serve on a parking committee at all. And we can just begin the process of understanding what the issues are. Since we last had our parking committee, I think that our issues may be a little bit different. But that's only my hypothesis right now in understanding for the residents that have reached out to me. We may have business owners that have businesses that may have difference of opinion. So I'm asking the council to consider that today.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowell. I see your hand, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and also thanks, Council, Councilmember Rowell. Just to be a little quick here, and upon our, my discussion with Councilmember Rowell this weekend, we're looking at a phased approach as well, because some of the things, we want to revitalize the, the parking committee, but then also re-educate the, the community, re-educate the residents, and enforce what's already on the books. And, and then, you know, kind of, like I said, doing, doing that phased approach. So even enforcing what's already on the books, that right there, that, that may help move the needle a little bit. But educating people first to say, hey, here are the regs, here are the town's regs for, for, for parking and, and the end code enforcement of it. So just wanted to, to just, just put that out there. They, they were looking at a phased, a phased approach as well. And part of the first phase was, it would be the volunteers, you know, who wants to be, who want to, the residents who want to be on, on the committee, and then re-education. Because one of the things, as we do reinforce the code duty enforcement, we want, we, we do want our residents to be, to be educated and, and refreshed. You know, so.
Great. Thank you both for that information. And as I shared before the last meeting, I did get some information as well from one of the parking committee members. And then it shows the same information Councilmember Rowell received. And one of the things that stood out to me is all, let me see, all, one, two, three, four, five. So all 10 members who were on the committee at the time were Ward, Ward 1 residents. And they did note in one of their reports that they'd like to have engagement from residents at Ward 2, but it just doesn't appear from what I've read so far that that ever happened. So if there's a decision to move forward and re-engage the parking committee, that would have to be considered, I think, equal number of members from each of the wards. But if I can just back up a moment, I think that as legislators, we have to also take a step back and ask ourselves, have we heard from 200 people that parking is a problem? 25 people, five people, how many? And the best way to get that is either putting out a community survey or either we roll up our sleeves and go door-to-door or mail out a survey. Because if we're going to spend our time and resources or ask our community members to volunteer on the committee, I'd much rather we put their time to good use. And I'm going to explain one situation, which was unfortunate, but a similar occurrence happened in one of the private areas of town where two neighbors couldn't get along over parking. And because they couldn't get along, they allowed their, well, they went to the HOA board to intervene, and it became a different matter. And I bring that example up because I also want us to be thoughtful and make sure that we're not going down a path because it's something like neighbors not getting along, but it's in true, indeed a true issue. We've got the numbers supporting us so that as we move forward, we're not spending time and resources for something, not that 20 people aren't important, but that we're spending taxpayer dollars and we need to make sure that they're being well-spent. The other thing is, and I mentioned it a little bit last time, is the parking committee did a great job in fact-finding and presenting the memo that was shared with us to the town council. But the reality is, these are not traffic engineers. And for a legislative body to move forward with any sort of program without engaging professionals, it puts us at risk. And I know there was not an appetite at the time to move forward in that, in that sort of way. And I think that's where things sort of fell apart. And what I appreciate now is it seems like the people who have been speaking with you, Councilmember Rowell, seem to be more open to re-engaging, trying to say, you know what, let's start again. The past is the past. Let's give this a new opportunity. And I think that's great. But I also want to make sure that it's clear that we have, we all agree that we're going to engage experts so that as, if we move in a particular direction to put a program in place, we're going through the proper processes and doing some basic research. You know, there are certain things that are required, like a study or traffic impact analysis to satisfy state government county requirements. And so again, we want to make sure that what we, if whatever action we choose to take is not conflicting with other government agencies. And not just that, but we have experts who can study the parking, study the traffic patterns, to come back to us with things that we can actually enforce. So again, I think it's great that you all are talking, hearing from the residents, and just think that, you know, moving forward, we need to at least begin with some sort of community survey. We need to make decisions that are based on data. That's one thing Councilmember Rowell said at her very first meeting in December 2019. She makes data-driven decisions. And I think that is really good advice that could really help us here. Councilmember Rowell, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor James. I was just gonna say that. Data-driven decisions. So you took the words right out of my mouth. I do see parallel with some of our speed issues. So, and I do support the need of a consultant or some type of professional to lead the charge so that it's not just the parking committee, who are residents who have their own experience. at stake, if I can use that as an example. Um, because when you do have a person who, this is their realm, this is their bubble um with their necessary background information, understanding um the laws, the rules in the state of Maryland as late to parking, traffic, enforcement, this highway is state highway versus town. It shapes the conversation a little bit different. Um, so uh given that, is that something that we want to consider? Um, because I know there's already an issue and it and then it also takes up, it's it takes the staff out the middle of it, right? Because you have a consulting, you have a third-party person that's able to collectively gather the information. Um, lastly, I do think that we, as legislators, we need to maybe divvy up the town and just start knocking doors. Because not only would that be an engagement tool and a strategy so that we can be able to collectively go out and hear the concerns, but we can also re-engage new homeowners or new renters, new, you know, so that we can be able um to, um, I remember back when Chief Collington, we were just in the thick of COVID, um, we took a particular community and um we beat the streets and we actually knocked on doors and it was a collaborative approach. So maybe that's something that we all want to consider is maybe partnering up, you know, Ward one and Ward two partner. We're going to choose this and then we can have a deadline as to the different pockets of our community that we're going to hit collaboratively. I do think that's a phenomenal idea.
Great. Thank you for that feedback. So um, Mr. McGory, as you're grabbing notes, if um you could just note that um and perhaps we can vote on it in the next meeting, whether or not we want to reinstitute the parking committee and not just assume that because you were on it before, you're on it now. I think people need to apply similar to how they would apply to any of the other um community groups that we've put um a call out for so that it's fair and people don't feel like, well, I'm new to the town and you're discriminating against me because you're putting people who were here before on and I want to have a voice. Um, so if you could uh help us move that forward and then um perhaps between maybe the three of us, me, you, Councilmember um Rowell, if we could share some notes with Mr. McGory to help put a plan together, that engagement plan and data gathering, so we can start working on that, uh that would be fantastic. Um, so that takes us out of old business and we're now moving into new business. And so, Mr. McGory, I know you provided the MOU uh draft that you'd receive from Amen Trust Memorial. So I'll turn it over to you to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this was sent out uh for your preliminary comment. There's, there's a couple uh key challenges with it. One is it refers to an attachment which we just received over the weekend, so the council hasn't seen that. So I'm not asking that the council approve that at this time. What you could do is, you know, give me some informal guidance on a negotiating strategy to go back to our partners. Uh, the track changes, the language that was used in there reflects both the substantive changes from the twenty sixteen version that was executed by the town and I assumed approved by the council. Uh, it has the acting town administrator's signature on it from twenty sixteen, but that agreement only lasted one year. So um that was allowed to lapse and and I have no evidence that it was modified or extended. So the purpose is to sort of give this an update. Obviously, the ground has moved with some some exciting things happening. Uh, in the stakeholders group has has come up with some preliminary work product about the um discussion points of the adaptive reuses conceived for Bostwick. And we're moving forward through the state legislature with the uh the bond process. Um, and just a sidebar update on that, we did get through the Department of Legislative Services staff analysis and remain in the governor's capital budget. So I did uh receive update on that. Um, that's a pretty low bar. Basically, if you didn't submit the attached documentation by a certain deadline, the staff said you were, you were presumed to be ineligible for the program or if there was some other legal impediment. So we did get over that hurdle, uh which is a good thing. I did have a very productive meeting with the Amen Trust. Um, and I note uh is Diane Griffin, who has long served the town of Bladensburg, I believe is is on this uh Zoom as well. And she was present at that meeting, so it was nice to, for me to be back with that group for the first time. I'd worked with many of these folks previously. Um, and it was a really robust dialogue, uh reaffirming the partnership between Amen Trust and its mandate to help preserve historical properties and monuments in the town of Bladensburg and uh and the town of Bladensburg itself. Uh, so I think this is a great partnership. Um, what I would suggest is if you have some comments uh to share about this and they're fine to discuss in public, that's fine. It's hard to negotiate as a council uh and and explore everything in public. So I would encourage you, if you have some feedback for me, you could either call me offline. Uh, we could consider scheduling a closed session, but we may want to wait till we've seen the uh, had a chance to review the RFP uh before taking formal action. But if there's, as I say, if there's preliminary guidance, you want to go back and have me communicate with Amen Trust, I'm happy to receive that now or anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGory. I'm wondering if um if maybe you could give us until Wednesday or maybe even the end of the week um for the council to really have a chance to go back through it again, uh formulate some questions or any concerns and just we compile a list for you, would that work? Or I don't want to speak for the group. Did anyone have feedback for um at the moment? Okay. And then we also want to circle back to Councilmember Blunt as well, just to make sure she has an opportunity to weigh in. Great. So by Friday, sounds good to everyone? Or Wednesday? Are you guys overachievers?
We have until Friday.
We're overachievers, Mayor, Friday, please.
Yes, ma'ams. Okay, so Mr. McGory, our deadline is Friday, sir. Close of business, that is not first thing Friday. And we'll just see see each other on the communication so everyone can just kind of keep up with um the feedback. The next item, is this Mr. Tenelli or Mr. McGory for the MML summer, summer conference and um changing the June council meeting dates?
Well, I will, I will happily throw Rich Charnovich, the town clerk, under the bus for having pointed this out initially to me that the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference happens to overlap with the traditionally scheduled second Monday of the month town council meeting. So I want to commend Rich for getting in front of that. Um, and uh, you know, the the town could be scheduled that meeting at any time. Um, it does offer an opportunity for us to have a quick preliminary discussion about the MML conference, who the, who among the council members wishes to attend and the parameters of that. My recommendation, since that June meeting is customarily when you would approve the budget, um, I would prefer that the council move that closer to the present time, in other words, to, I believe it's June sixth, um, rather than deferring it to later in the year, uh just in case there are some policy issues that come up with the budget that need to wait. And I'm just pulling up my calendar to make sure I'm correct about those dates. Yes, so the, the current scheduled MML conference is May, is June twelve to fifteen. Uh, the current scheduled council meeting would be on Monday, the thirteenth of June. I'm, I would recommend that the council schedule it for sometime that prior week. And if it wanted to do the Monday, that would be the sixth. Uh, but there's no legal obligation for you to stick with the Monday night meetings, so that's up to your prerogative.
Right. Um, and I do definitely understand giving room in case there are additional updates or changes that we need to make um which that can happen or if we need to schedule an additional info meeting or um presentation from Mr. Tenelli. So uh, Mr. Tenelli, does that work for you, the uh moving it up? Because I know that means you have to do advanced work to get everything, all the materials to the council. So I ju, I don't want to put a date out there if you can't, you know.
I mean, it's fine. I mean, I guess because we're in March right now, or I mean, we're not at the end of May making this decision. So it's uh, yes, absolutely. I can work with anything.
Okay. Yep, no worries. Uh, so council members, uh, how would you feel about moving up our meeting to June sixth? I know you need to check your schedules, so if you can't do that tonight, we can always put this on the April agenda because we are out pretty early per the charter. If we're taking a, making a change to the upcoming council work session, it has to be done at least by the meeting prior, per the charter. So again, we do have a little bit of time. Um, if you all want to just check your schedules, check with your families to see. Uh, because some of us are juggling little infants and people and, you know, got to make preparations. So I want to be respectful of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want to hold off and and we'll circle back. Okay.
I'll hold my hand, Mayor, holding my hand up.
Okay. I see your hand, Councilmember Brown.
Um, and also, I mean, I know June, you said June sixth, but what about that um following? That following would be June the twentieth. So I'm, you know, so would that be an option as well?
Well, it's really up to us. I think if we move to the twentieth, we would have still ten days before the close of the fiscal year in case, again, there's any sort of changes that need to be made. I just want to make sure if we're making changes at the end, that staff have enough time to get everything in place uh prior to the new fiscal year start.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, the other thing is if we say June sixth now and we find out, let's say you have a conflict, Councilmember McBride has a conflict, we have enough time in April and May to make the adjustment versus if we push it to later and find out there's a conflict, it kind of limits what we can do to adjust there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, Mr. McGory, so we will come back uh to it and perhaps just um vote on it at the April meeting. And that way, everyone has time, once again, to check their schedules and make sure June sixth can work. The other item following that is Women's History Month recognition. Uh, yes, it is Women's History Month. And so big thanks to all of the women history makers who've made it possible for women like us to serve in the capacity that we are currently serving in. Uh, oh, Mr. Charnovich, I just noticed your hand. Was that there before? Sorry.
Oh, uh, yeah, no problem, Mayor. I was going to say something real quickly about the last item. I'm sorry to uh interject for a second, but I wanted to point out that um in addition to the uh uh the discussion about changing the meeting date, uh for the the council's information, I placed in your packet this month a, the preliminary um agenda for the actual MML conference. So it's it's a, it's the, in the item associated with your uh uh your packet, you can see the agenda, the schedule and see what all is on there. So to see what it, what interests you and uh and whatnot relation to the summer conference. So I just wanted to kind of ma, make note of that to to take a look whenever, whenever the council can.
Definitely, and we certainly appreciate you putting that in there to make it easier for us to review. Councilmember Rowell, I see your hand.
Um, my question is that um at what point do we, as a council, decide who is going and who is not going to MML? Um, the only reason why I'm asking because I would need to like make plans for that. Um, I would like to go um where the summer will be easier for me, but I have like a couple more classes for my um, my certification and I wanted to try to get that. So, but I I know we have a couple new employees and new council members. So I kind of wanted to be respectful of everyone because I know we can't all go. So, but I'm just asked, could we take a, like a small poll to see who is interested in going, just so that if I need to make some arrangements, I could?
Absolutely. So um council members, Brown and McBride, if you want to come off mute, were you interested in attending MML this year?
I have, I just have a question. Um, is there a reason why if all the, the council and the council wanted to attend, is there a reason why they can't? Uh, currently, has something changed?
Uh, I think just respecting whatever the budget is. And last year, if I'm not mistaken, we may have cut back on that line item just due to COVID. But I don't anticipate that it would be a challenge because there's been very few conferences that we've attended, you know, this fiscal year. So I would imagine everyone's able to go and so that wouldn't be a problem. But Mr. Tenelli, in the financial reports, I guess we can check there just to make sure. But um I strongly recommend, if you can, attend, that you go ahead and sign up.
I'm sorry, I called at the same time and shut the meeting off. Um, um, yeah, i, in the council meeting reports, I mean, uh, the council business development line item is um underutilized so far. So um, and it's roughly, I got to look the costs up from previous years. Um, you know, I think roughly between uh room charges uh per diem and also the actual registration, I think it's about eighteen hundred dollars per uh per member to go, roughly. I got to look back and add that up, but it looks like um there should be enough room for everybody to go.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli. And I know this is um through the end of February, but the line item was fifteen thousand. And as of the end of February, we were at fourteen hundred thirty-six dollars. So I see no reason why anyone who wants to go from the council wouldn't be able to. But the best thing to do, especially um for your benefit, Councilmember McBride, is if you could email Mr. Charnovich and Mr. McGory, let them know that you intend to go. Um, that way they can work to get you registered at the earlier discounted rate, so we don't wait until the costs go up. And then same thing for the hotel, if you could work with them on your travel dates to make sure we get the most cost-effective um hotel offering, that would be ideal.
Okay, yes.
All right, thank you all. Okay, let me flip out of the budget, get back over to the agenda. So next, we had Women's History Recognition and um don't have a name next to it. So was this, oh, Mr. McGory, back to you.
Hi, sorry, I'm also backing up to the prior issue and it was, it was only to say, uh, to to Councilmember Rowell's point and and the the newish council members. Because of COVID, there was a a training opportunity missed and several of these, both fall and summer uh conferences through Maryland Municipal League were skipped uh during twenty twenty. And uh, and the conference in twenty twenty-one was relatively sparsely attended. So I just want to say, with the ARPA funding available as well, um, you know, and you've already made the point that there is budget there. But I want to strongly encourage everyone to attend, um, to get caught up on that training. There've been some legislative changes and I think it would be terrific if we had a, as robust a possible turnout among the council members. Uh, and I'm certainly encouraging senior staff to attend as well. So I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of of that. And we, we will pull out the stops to help, help you all attend because it's a really valuable experience. And as I said, most people missed it in one or both of the last couple of years. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. McGory. And so now, finally, back to Women's History Month. So in our council packets, there was a proclamation. Mr. Charnovich, did you put this together or did a member of the council put that together?
Uh, sure, Mayor. So what um, what the administrative team did was we um initially, we saw the proclamation that uh was uh sent to us by the county executive's office that Prince George's County uh did for Women's History Month. And we thought that it would be a uh a a very good thing to place on our agenda. Uh, shout out and thank you to Ray Jeffries, who did the uh, the artwork and the design uh for the proclamation. And we uh uh took some of their language from the county and converted it into a uh proclamation uh here uh for Bladensburg that we can do. Um, I guess it would probably be my recommendation maybe to do the actual proclamation at the regular meeting, unless you want to do it now um or both. Uh, but uh, we thought it'd be a great thing to do, given that this is, my understanding, the first all-female uh council uh here in Bladensburg. Uh, so it's a uh wonderful thing to do during during uh this Women's History Month. So that was our, that was our idea and our plan.
Well, very nice and thank you for that recognition. And so, yes, if we could add this, um, or I believe it is already on the uh council meeting agenda, item ten D. And so definitely look forward to having you read this and vote in favor of it. So again, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Jeffries also for putting this together.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item, yeah, absolutely. The next item that we have is something I know I'm excited about and members of the council, because we've been talking about this for a while now and we're finally here. So Chief, I will turn it over to you. And we're finally here. So Chief, I will turn it over to you to introduce our special guest and, uh, the ShotSpotter program.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, council colleagues and community. Uh, I know this has been a long time coming, um, and in your packet is also a, uh, a memo memorandum from me. And if I can just read it for the public, it's real short. Uh, it says, "The purpose of this memorandum is to ask the town council, that the town of Bladensburg's council to consider subscribing to ShotSpot as a means to mitigate the numerous gun-related incidents that negatively affect the quality of life of our residents and public safety workers within the town. As first responders, we've responded to numerous cases involving guns being discharged in residential areas. And some of those instances have resulted in homicides. In addition to more than 130 other cities, including Baltimore City and Washington DC, I urge the town council to seriously consider joining the ShotSpot. First responders using ShotSpot technology have saved lives by accurately directing them to victims who were wounded and bleeding profusely. Consequently, the number of gun-related deaths decreased since first responders began to take lifesaving measures." And I'll just stop it and leave that last paragraph out, but as doing such, I reached out to, uh, Ms. Jane Soderberg from a, uh, from ShotSpotter. And then she connected me, uh, with her team. And, uh, in, in doing so, I connected our team, town administrator, uh, town treasurer and, uh, clerk, uh, Mr. Charnovich, we all, uh, sat in on, uh, March the 9th. We had a Zoom call and it was so, uh, informative that we wanted to bring this forth to the council in public. And with that being said, I want to turn it over. I saw Mr. Wrong, uh, Teachman, uh, on the line. And I'll turn it over to him to do a quick presentation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you affording me, uh, some time with you tonight. I'm told 10 minutes. Is that my guideline? Okay, then I'll be briefing my comments. Uh, and please interrupt me with any questions as I go through this. I'll start with what I think is the most important point about what ShotSpotter does. And that is this. We recognize that most gunfire, excuse me, most gunfire is unreported in a city. Eighty percent or more is the national average. Independent research has shown this. We have 125 clients in the United States and they're reporting that as well. So on behalf of the chief and the men and women of your police department, they're only getting at best 20% notification. And they're getting it inaccurate because the caller may not know where the shooter is or where the shots were fired. They just heard a noise. They can't tell any of the data that we can provide and I'm ha- happy to show you what that is. And they're not timely because there's often a contemplation period before they call 911. And if you've called 911, uh, great staff there, but they could ask all those questions and someone could be bleeding out. We're sending a police car immediately after we determine that gunfire has occurred. Now, I also want to bring this to a personal point, maybe tell you a story. And that is when shots are fired, someone may be awakened in the middle of the night by that gunfire. They may go down the hall from their bedroom, comfort a child who's crying. And then at some point, go to the front window of their home and a peek through the blinds or pull back the curtain. They're waiting to see a response from your police department. But because no one calls, and if we have time, we'll get into why people don't call. Because no one has called, the police department doesn't know and they can't respond to what they don't know. But your residents may not know that. I was a cop 38 years, a chief for eight years in two cities. And I know that we depend upon community engagement, community trust. But the resident looking out the window, thinking the police know. And why would they do that? Because we project omniscience, all-knowing to our police based on our experience watching television. Every crime gets solved, every perpetrator gets identified and prosecuted. That's how the cop shows work. But that's not real life. Real life is depending upon the community to call us and on gunfire, they're calling us at less than 20%. But the residents don't know that. So when they look out the window, if they think the police know, but the police don't show, what might they think about their police department? They might think the police don't care. And they may attribute that to race or class or immigration status or any kind of protected class. So what ShotSpotter does is we help break that and we help by detecting, protecting and connecting. We detect the gunfire. We can hear noises. We can discern gunfire from other noises like helicopters, jackhammers, snowplows, fireworks and backfire and very accurately distinguish gunfire. And we detect it comprehensively. In the last couple of years, according to an outside audit, we had a 97% accuracy notification, the false positive rate of just 0.5%. We position the police to better protect. We get them to the situation immediately. Our notification is on about 45 to 50 seconds. We can actually guarantee it's under 60 with a precise location, probably the size of the room you're in. So they can get to an injured person quickly to save a life, immediate first aid, transportation to a trauma center. They can get to the right scene to discover evidence, talk to witnesses, gather forensic evidence. And they connect with the community by engaging when they get there, maybe ringing doorbells, leaving door hangers and the message is, "We're here because we care." Now, how does it work? I'll just tell you very quickly, what we do is we do an analysis of, and I think your whole city is a square mile, so that might be all-inclusive here. But we want to make sure we're covering the areas that are most prone to violence, gun violence based on historical data. And we will tell you what happened, when it happened and where it happened. We will tell you, and I'll show you in a couple of slides, exactly what occurred, where it occurred and with a timestamp. Now, how does it work? We will come to your city, setting up a sensor array. Think if you would of what has happened now with your cell phones in your city. Your provider, whoever your cell phone provider is, has set up a network of cell towers and mini cells. They built this array of their equipment so they can give you a clear signal to make phone calls and texts and emails and so forth. Similarly, we put our apparatus on rooftops of buildings and occasionally on utility poles. The sensor density depends on the park and architecture. But our price is based on the square mileage, not on the number of sensors. So how many we put in is irrelevant to your cost. Then after we built this array, when someone fires a gun, that acoustic event radiates out and our sensors detect and locate it. That is, we hear it, we timestamp it and locate it. And I'm going to simplify this a bit, but basically through triangulation, there's a lot of sophisticated science here to account for echoes and weather conditions. But basically, like we did as kids when there was a lightning and thunder event, when you saw the lightning strike and you waited the seconds to hear the thunder and you kind of had an idea of how far away that lightning strike was by how long it took. Well, similarly, we count the time, we measure to the millisecond when each sensor detected that event and that's how we can locate it precisely. And then how do we know it's gunfire? Well, sophisticated machine algorithms, uh, classification takes place and that filters out the vast majority of things that we hear. But we don't dispatch the police based on algorithms. We have a human reviewer in every event that looks at the, uh, the acoustic event. They listen to the audio recording. They look at the acoustic signature or the waveform configuration. They look at the sense of participation. That is, they're sitting in front of a bank of monitors. They look at the locations where the ShotSpotter technology was located, where the sensors were located. And they can see if there's a pattern and that helps us determine if it's gunfire or some other false positive noise. Now, that whole process takes less than 60 seconds from trigger pull to sending the police to the precise location. And that information that we're sending out goes to your 911 center. It certainly goes to desktops at headquarters so the chief can see it if he's in his office. But then it goes out simultaneously to mobile data terminals or devices, laptops, whatever's in your squad cars, to officers' phones and even to their smartwatches. And we perform both on Android and iOS platforms so we can notify the police regardless of what technology they have on hand. Now, I'll just give you a quick illustration of how this works. Once we, uh, determine it's gunfire, the officers would be in their squad car. This is what we call, uh, CAD, computer aided dispatch. They'd get this notification sound. They would then have their screen showing them precisely where the gunshot occurred with that little, uh, teardrop, if you will. That's the round count in there. We would tell them if there's high capacity, multiple shooter, the street address and so forth. Again, another example, the nearest parcel map, the time, qualified data about the event and an incident, uh, summary, we call that investigative lead summary with the timestamp of every shot fired and the sequence of shots. Why is sequence important? Two people shooting at each other. We want to know who shot first and this helps the police with their investigation. There's a whole lot that I could show you in terms of features. Uh, time doesn't permit, but let me just say, we also work with your prosecutors, both locally and the US Attorney's Office, so state or federal prosecution. We have a customer success team and I believe the chief's been briefed on this as well. Uh, decades of law enforcement experience on that team, both local municipal police and federal agents that would help the chief develop policy, best practices and training. Along with a community engagement director, Dr. Tate is a PhD in social work and he's expert at community engagement to work with our ShotSpotter customers. So that's some of the value proposition we offer. Uh, we can integrate with other technologies such as, uh, camera systems, license plate readers, UAVs and drones. But I think more importantly is working with the community, whether it's street outreach programs, focused deterrence programs. And I'll end with this for now, in terms of strategies, trauma-informed care. Understanding that many of our young people are harmed, not just psychologically, but physiologically. Disrupted neurodevelopment is a side effect of trauma. And so what we can do is look at the ShotSpotter data, and this is an example, what you'd see on a screen of seven days. We can do it 24 hours, three days and seven days. We can take this data and share it with the school officials so they can identify what children, what young people are exposed to gunfire and give them wraparound care. Now, I heard the term earlier tonight in different contexts about data-driven decisions. That's actually what I often talk about. For the chief to make allocation decisions about his personnel, where should they be by time of day, day of the week and so forth, he needs to have that data. Imagine trying to run a police department, you're only getting the tip of the iceberg. At best, he's only getting, uh, 20% or less of the gunfire activity. Uh, we can change that. We can go to all the houses where gunfire occurs. We can interact with the residents and say, "We're here because we care about you, want to make sure you're safe, want to make sure your children are okay. Do they need to speak to a police officer?" We want to change the narrative in cities across the country such as yours. From the police don't care to the police are there. Let me stop there and ask if there are any questions. Uh, and ask, what do you think? And that's very abbreviated presentation, so forgive me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Teachman, for giving us the short version. Chief shared also in the memo he provided to the council, the YouTube link for us to watch in advance of tonight's meeting, which also gave a lot of great information. And just from that, some of the notes I wrote down and watching that was being impressed with the acoustic sensors, which can detect and timestamp, uh, the gunshots and not just that, but the fact that this technology is so sophisticated, it can distinguish between fireworks and gunshots. During COVID, we saw, for whatever reason, a huge uptick in fireworks. And most residents who complained about that, that I know I've talked to were nervous that, well, I think it was fireworks, but I'm not sure if it was gunshots and I don't want to call if it's just fireworks. And so this kind of sophisticated technology takes the guesswork out of it. So that it's distinguishing on, focusing in on what gunshots are fired and providing the, um, information to the emergency responders. I also was impressed with the false positive rating. You said, I want to make sure I heard this right, 0.5%?
Zero point five, yeah, 0.5% as reported from our customers to us. And that data has been reviewed by an outside firm called Edgeworth Analytics. And I'd be happy to, or have my colleague Jason, who's been in communication with the chief, share that report with you.
Perfect. Well, again, we heard so much about this. I was first introduced to it by one of our officers and he actually pulled the app up on his phone and was giving me a quick and dirty demo with it. But to see, uh, even more capabilities between the YouTube, uh, video link and your presentation really has, um, been super helpful. I want to just scroll, make sure I pull in the council members. I see a hand from Councilmember Route.
And may I quickly, Mayor, before you do, uh, you touched on, and, and time to permit me to go through why people don't call, why it's only less than 20%, but recognition, not knowing if that noise is gunfire or not, is a key reason. This is not a scientific survey. This is yours truly traveling the country for the last six and a half years, meeting with community residents. They think someone else is calling. They're afraid that if they call, a squad car will come to their door and there'll be retaliation from the shooter. And they've also given up because they haven't seen a police response previously. So they just affect their quality of life. They don't leave their house, don't let their kids use the playground nearby, don't even let their kids leave home after school. That, that disruption in lifestyle is one of the key side effects. That's not measured in police crime stats that we give the FBI, but it's very important to all of us in police leadership that we need to address that. It's more than just bullets hitting flesh. It's diminished quality of life among our residents. Uh, that's very important when we talk about gun violence.
That is really good to call out and just recognize, um, because I think we all know residents who've gone through these various, um, emotions and, you know, feelings and we do have to do our part to address them. Uh, Councilmember Route, I thought I saw your hand up. I want to turn it over to you.
I think that this is a phenomenal tool that we can be able to provide our police departments, um, and the officers that put themselves on the line. Because from my experience, they will be able to do more to, um, protect and serve our residents and businesses because they know exactly where things are coming from. So they could be able to plan accordingly as to being able to catch the perpetrator or being able to defend and protect and serve. Um, I do have a couple of questions. One question, if someone has, um, a silencer and they are using that, would this mechanism be able to pick up, um, some responses? And then this may be a dumb question, but I do know that our residents, because we did talk about fireworks, would we be able to detect even fireworks? Like that was not a gunfire. It was a firework and then send a notification as well? Just because we've had so many issues with fireworks and, you know, fireworks are illegal in our town. And so that would be an added benefit. So I'm sorry for two questions, but I did have those things.
So, let me take the latter question first. As to fireworks, the chief may have access to a portal that'll let him look at all the events, even the ones we dismissed. But in terms of real-time notifications, the way the process is set up is for us to dismiss fireworks, jackhammers, snowplows and other noises and only focus on, uh, the gunshots. So we're dispatching on gunshots. Um, that's how the system is set up and that's what you'd be subscribing to is a gunshot notification system. As far as silencers, uh, the contract that we provide the city would have a service level agreement and that would be promising low and delivering high, if you will. Uh, we would promise you in writing 90% notification of external unsuppressed gunfire over 25 caliber. Now, let me go through those limitations. External means, outside and in an external environment. Uh, that means not in a car, someone shooting into a vehicle, because what happens is the vehicle contains that acoustic event. It doesn't radiate out and we need three or four or more sensors in order to triangulate. Now, the nearest sensor may still pick it up. We may have captured the recording. And that's why during our onboarding or training, we will teach your police department to let us know right away if there was a gunshot event that we didn't notify, we may still have the recording available and the data that goes with it as to time and location. But we don't notify, we can't dispatch because we don't have sufficient sensor participation because that acoustic event was suffocated, just like a point-blank shot, shooting inside of a house or inside of a building. That's not part of the service level agreement. Uh, unsuppressed, uh, again, point blank to a body is a suppression event, as is some of the mechanical silences you talked about. But frankly, we're not seeing a lot of those and maybe because of heightened prosecution limits across the states where, uh, you get extra jail time, maybe a deterrent effect, but we're not seeing a lot of silencers. I don't know if you've had that experience, Chief, in your city, but that has But that hasn't been an issue for us. Uh and then over twenty-five caliber. And again, we're seeing mostly a larger caliber uh criminal use. But the the problem with the lower calibers is they don't create enough acoustic energy, again, to engage the sensors to participate accurately. So we can give location and notification. We may still have that event recorded, but we may not be dispatching to ninety percent. With those lower caliber uh firearms. Great questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teachman. Again, we really appreciate you taking the time to give us more information about the capabilities of the system. And look forward to uh hopefully being able to bring this tool here to the town. Um so we can help our officers with technology to have faster response times to these kinds of um gun shootings. And ultimately reduce them, if not eliminate them. Um Chief, any final comments before Mr. Teachman departs?
Uh no, Mayor. Uh just want to thank Mr. Teachman for taking his time to uh be here this evening and a great presentation.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you again. We look forward to being in contact with you moving forward, Mr. Teachman.
Thank you for the opportunity. I hope next time I get to come in person.
That would be lovely. Well, hopefully, once we have the system set up, we can do a little walk and tour with you in town.
I look forward to that very much. Thank you.
Excellent. Have a good evening, sir. All right. So with that, that takes us through the end of tonight's work session agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Moved by council member Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by council member Ralph. Sorry, it was a little bit. That's too funny. Two years of this and we still are all in it. Just don't even worry about it. No judgment. Any discussion, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I. Any nays? The eyes have it. Thank you so much. We're adjourned. We'll take a brief break and be right back at seven P.M. Thank you, everyone.